To the Republic, or to the sentence, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the justice of God.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of February 17th, 2011. Any comments, changes, edits?
Just a couple. Page two, last line of the first paragraph, it says, "He said OMR is looking at an aggressive turn." Third paragraph down the same page, the sentence should say, "He said OMR structures." Page three, bottom paragraph, Mr. Huddleston has the applicant prepare a direct scope, and Mr. Lippman said it will be prepared. Same thing on the first paragraph and third paragraph on page four. The substitution of names.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes.
If not, they can have a motion to accept the minutes of February 17th, 2011 as a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Okay, so be it. Okay, next item, let's see, for the planning board to act on A and L acres, possible ninety day extension of conditional final approval for phase one.
Yeah, I think you should have received a copy of a letter sent to by Mr. Stizito with bullet points as the items that they covered. If you don't have it, I can give it to you out in the meeting. There's a number of pictures there showing the roadway cut that's been in there. So this is in response to your request that applicants now give you what they've done to the new guy.
I thought they had.
They were really giving the opposite.
Apparently not.
No.
Does anybody have?
Apparently not, I thought it was.
Apparently not. So you want me to read it?
To the degree we have more months to hear it.
Yeah. Okay, the applicant is requesting a ninety day extension of the conditional final approval for phase one lots one through twenty. Within the last three hundred and sixty days, the applicant has completed the following. Pursuant to the request of Superintendent Bloomfield and Virginia Moore of the NSVAR, the applicant requested a spot on the April 1st, 2010 planning board agenda to charitably convey lands around the stone schoolhouse to help protect the integrity of this state and national historical register site. Applicant and its representative attended the April 15th, 2010 planning board meeting regarding the lot line change. On April 22nd, 2010, the applicant prepared an application for their sketch plat, I mean sketch plan approval and submitted eighteen copies of the lot line modification plan. The applicant attended the May 20th, 2010 planning board meeting for the lot line modification where approval was granted for the lot line modification. On July 1st, 2010, the applicant appeared before the planning board for a ninety day extension of the conditional final subdivision approval. On August 13th, 2010, the applicant attended a pre-construction conference with the county engineer. On August 2010, the applicant began to install sediment and erosion control devices. On August 15th, 2010, the county engineer conducted a site inspection, seeing the attached pictures.
Act like you did.
I'll pass them around. On September 16th, 2010, the applicant appeared before the planning board to amend the resolution of conditional final approval for phase one of A and L acres filed April 27th, 2010. On September 27th, 2010, the applicant appeared before the town board to request a nine month extension of the zoning exemption from the requirements of the local law number four of 2009 for phase two. Continued construction of the road through the fall of 2010. On January 5th, 2011, the applicant appeared before the town board to request a nine month extension of a zoning exemption from the requirements of local law number four for 2009 for phase two. The applicant has continued to monitor the erosion and sediment control throughout the winter. It is the intention of the applicant to continue construction of the required site improvements in the spring as weather permits. And then there are a number of pictures here, just starting down here, everybody can look up. Okay, so I assume they're requesting a ninety day extension of the conditional final approval for phase one.
The present conditional final approval is due March 16th, 2011. Ninety days would bring it to June 16th, 2011, your meeting date on the.
Okay, thoughts, comments, questions?
If anybody looked at the lot line changes, just to make sure that it's our request to span the area around the stone, we'll have.
That's been done and filed.
Yeah.
That was, that was requested and was done sometime the other day.
It was thanks to that, what they would do then.
We didn't town board the questions.
That's just the cover. That's the protective cover over the apple, to prevent it sprays. See the photos?
Well, from those pictures, it appears that they are moving forward at least with something, they've got some activity going on there. Sounds like they're waiting and they're planning on taking it back up in the spring when the weather allows. So does anybody have a problem with another ninety day extension?
Nope.
Okay, and then you have a motion to extend the A and L acres to June 16th, 2011. As a second. Okay, Sam Basilo, if you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Extend. Okay, thank you. Next one is Goshen Green Timber Trail, assume lead agency and type the action.
Yeah, this is the one that you asked, requested from the planning board that you be the lead agency.
The town board initially, as part of their action and under their secret duties set out, they noticed contempt for them to be lead agency. This board chimed in and asked that you instead assume lead agency, and the town board believes that that would be inappropriate way to go, and so they withdrew from their intention of being lead agency and gave that over to you tonight. I think you should simply type the action as a type one action and assume lead agency. There being no other rejections noted during the initial thirty day timeframe from the town's decision.
Okay, you have a motion that we declare Goshen Green Timber Trail a type one action and that we assume lead agency for the particular application.
I'll make that motion.
So do you have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, next is North Jersey Truck and Trailer Service, bond reduction.
Yeah, this is the one down here by Menco, they did, they're building it up, they had some improvements to do on the road, and they had some improvements to do on the site. I just wanted to discuss.
We distributed a letter some time ago, although this would be on your agenda back February. They've completed all of the public improvements, including the extension of Cannon Hill Drive. They've gone to the town boards and offered dedications for the roads. Only remaining item as to the last term of bond relief is more is the asphalt. We've received the asphalt, reviewed the asphalt, yeah, and the business of the asphalt. Down the looking for production of your long farm and facilitate the road acceptance.
Was the issue with the vegetation addressed? Was it about the situation of some vegetation that burned?
That is actually the one from the private property. That wasn't the song, the way that the bond was, the public improvement portion, some other bonds were private. We're not, that's correct.
Game, roads, curb, drainage, yes. So what was the recommended bond reduction?
This would reduce the bond by $1,100 for the coverage improvement, the bond would be zero.
All right, from the engineer's recommendation, can I have a motion that we reduce, we accept the bond reduction as proposed for North Jersey Truck and Trailer Service? Ready?
Second.
Second.
Sam Basilo, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so be it. Okay, next item on the agenda then is New Singular Wireless AT&amp;T, 10.9 plus minus acres for a special use permit located on 2076 Route 17A in CO District for telecommunications facility.
This is the first time you're hearing this tonight, this is written here. For those of you who want to plan for it for a while, you remember this is a property that we had at Finnegan's Corner. We had a warehouse, I think there was three warehouses up on the left-hand side, they go up the hill. This is on that property, those warehouses were never built.
None of them?
None of them were ever built. They walked away from the project. They were right there on the inside of the turn, just before that blue building is there now. So it's right next to, right just.
Oh, is that where the Dunkin' Donuts distribution center was?
No.
No.
That was, that was going to be right across, park, property, I think.
Right.
Right. Now this is before that, this is, as you're going down, you have Jones eating.
Right.
Just after the turn there, you have the old, look at a service station that has toys or whatever in there. Right alongside there is the access point, they're going to go up into the back. And then right next to that is that blue building that used to have the trucks and that. So this is the property we're talking about, and gentlemen, here's here.
Good evening, Chairman Huddleston, members of the board. My name is John Furst, I'm an attorney at Cuddy and Federer. We represent the applicant, Kent New Singular Wireless, also known as AT&amp;T. I was told to keep this short. Excuse me?
Can you speak a little louder?
Sure, I was told to keep this short, so what I'm basically here for tonight is to provide the board a brief introduction about our application, and we'd like to get some input from the board with respect to a balloon test. We'd like to do a balloon test, give some input as far as the vantage points, the board, since you guys are familiar with the local community. We have a list, we sent it over to your building inspector, we also have already met with your staff members last week, and so we've compiled a list of about twelve spots, twelve locations, and we'd like to get your input as far as, you know, what do you think of those vantage points, if you have a couple other vantage points you'd like to add. But first, let me just give you a brief overview of the application. We're looking to get coverage along 17A, County Road 6, and County Road 31, it's an area of the town right by Finnegan's Lane, as the building inspector was describing. It's two, the address is 2076 Route 17A, it is an approximately eleven acre parcel. It is zone commercial, office mixed use. What AT&amp;T is proposing is a 130-foot monopole, that's those poles that look like trees, but you know, obviously that's up to the board, if they want a monopole, we can do that as well. This is a recommendation from one, from the building inspector, so that's not set in stone, we can always work with that. AT&amp;T's antennas, they're going to be including twelve antennas. The centerline height of these antennas will be 123 feet above ground level. The monopole or the tower will be able to accommodate five additional carriers, so then you'll have colocation opportunities in the future. At the base of the tower, within a fenced-in compound, it's going to be about a 2,500 square foot fenced-in compound. AT&amp;T will include its equipment shelter. Within that shelter, it'll have equipment cabinets, and those cabinets will connect to the, it'll have wires connecting to the pole, the wires will go up in through the pole, and then connect to the antennas at the top. The equipment shelter itself is about 12 feet long, 12 feet wide, I'm sorry, it's about 12 feet wide, 28 feet long, and 12 feet high. You know, under the code, obviously the code prefers colocation, we did an extensive search of the area, we couldn't find any structures tall enough within a mile of our closed site that would provide adequate coverage for AT&amp;T. There's, I just want to go over some of the advantages of the site real quick. The site's going to be set back about 800 feet, over 800 feet from Route 17A, so it'll be well set back for the road. The property is heavily wooded, again, it's commercial zone, and there is already an existing dirt road that we're going to use as access, we're just going to clean that up a little bit, so there'll be minimal ground disturbance. Do you have to take any questions from the board, or do you have any questions to ask the board?
You said the area was covered with wood, what is the elevation?
Uh, trees, I don't know off the top of my head, but you know, some of the trees are pretty big, they're six, 12, 14 inch diameter trees, I'd have to find out, but you know, I feel like it'd be anywhere from 40 to 60, sometimes 70, I guess, I'm not very sure.
What type of tree are they?
They're deciduous.
Fatigued?
Yeah, I think they're mostly deciduous trees, so that's something you want to keep in mind as far as, you know, how a monopole is good amongst deciduous trees.
What are some of the other options of a monopole?
The standard monopole, usually painted gray, it kind of blends in with the sky.
So either a steel tower or a monopole?
Yeah, those are the two best options.
Yeah, we have a cell tower committee here in the town, and then our consultant has always told us there's a variety of poles that are available too. To tell you the truth, we have a pole designed, ready to go, and the telephone company, whoever it was, walked away from it just down below this property, right? We'd already been through the whole nine yards, we were just picking out the color. That was the clock tower option. Okay, which had been through our committee, and I think our committee had, I mean, I don't know, I really don't know why anything would be any different here, you're not a half mile from where this previous tower was. We went through this for a year, was it?
I think two.
Almost two years.
It was a long time.
The committee, I'm talking to members of the committee, so in the committee, we had come up with a clock tower option which was available, our consultant told us was absolutely appropriate, we had the ability to ask for it. Would anything have changed between then and now?
Well, I don't know the exact location of this property, I think, in this case, I think the monopole was first proposed because it is in a wooded area, granted, there aren't any other everything.
Yeah, but this was also on the ridge up by Spruce Hill, right?
It is up at the north.
Yeah.
But it's not, I don't think it's going to, you know, get too far above that ridge, in fact, we pushed it back that way, to try to avoid from the visual impacts that the neighbors on the way.
Okay, well, let's do the balloon test, see where it is, see where, you know, what it's going to look like, I mean, I see no reason to stick a clock tower in a bunch of trees if we're not going to see anything but the top of the clock tower, but, but again, the clock, if the clock tower is appropriate for this site, and our committee feels so, we've already beat this to death, and we had been through, we've been through everything on this before, so it would probably save us all a lot of heartache if we could just dig that up.
I was going to say, do you happen to know who the prior applicant was, or do you have an address or section block and lot, I can look up their file.
Let me just say about the clock tower, the prior, I was with the board here, that that application was down near where the carpe Remi products is.
Yeah.
Down in that lower area, and it sort, that would have sort of tied in with the village. What happened to the applicant is they went into the village of Florida, not more than a few hundred feet away, and then they just put up a monopole.
Okay, we were going to live with the monopole.
Yeah, the problem here is, this is going to be high up in a rural area, and a clock tower, a flag, or something like that would be worse probably than a monopole, because it would, it would be really something big that would really pop out, way above the trees, so we'll have to take a look.
They have flat poles, and they work well with fire departments, and we'll operate with, the clock towers work, the village setting, we're kind of set back.
This was out in the middle of the field.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, it wasn't in a village setting at all, it was out in the middle of the field, so it's not a public hearing, so just wait for it.
Okay, so I'll look up that file.
Yeah, look at the file, but let's do, let's do the balloon series so we can see what we're looking at, where we are.
One of the main reasons this applicant is reporting tonight is to determine the locations of those actual photographs, I know in past reports, boards have specific locations, particularly with our carriage trail and whatnot, this applicant wants to get rid of the way that we move, at this time of the year, we want to leave some of the trees, so where is any strong opinion as to where those boards should be taken?
Where are the, where are the proposed balloon test locations?
I have one question on the list of proposed locations. Number 11 on the list that I saw says Church Park Historic District in the village of Goshen. Seems a little odd to me. Who, first question is, who proposed this?
Our, we have an expert who does the visual simulations, she's a planner with tectonic engineering. I also incorporate, Mr. Garland had several six locations, so I incorporated his comments into your planners list, so a combination of Mr. Garland, as well as the team's planner, put together the list.
Where is the Church Park Historic District?
In the village, in the village of Goshen.
You're talking over the salish?
No, no, no. Right here. Right, right by the first Presbyterian church, probably would be a good shot.
Right here.
And you think you're going to see something out?
What she does is she has to look at all the resources, any listed historic site, any environmental resources, she looks within about a couple of miles.
It can be to eliminate any kind of concern for a public historic area. In other words, if it'd be listed, it'd have a view done with respect to that, wouldn't see it, so they could then eliminate.
You want to confirm that you cannot see?
I'm not against it, it just really didn't make.
Right, and they have a synthesis.
It probably would not have been chosen but for the fact that it's actually a designated historic area, and that's normally the reason why they choose those sites, to determine whether or not there's anything here, I think everybody knows that it's not going to have it, but they can go ahead and use that and then take their pictures from there and then make the determination.
All right, well, for the public's, I don't know if they have this or not, if they don't, so I'm going to read these just for the, for the people who have come for this, who are interested. Immediate area along Route 17A, including Route 17A northbound at Duchess Quarry, and the southbound at the Maruski Farm near.
Section block and lot.
Session block and lot 17-1-7, that's right by your farm. Northgate Road and Milburn Road, including the end of Northgate between Lot 38 and 39, Reservoir Road, Black Dirt farming region along Route 6 Blasky Highway, including the Derlinville area and its intersection with Route 17A. Route 31 Maple Avenue, including Sawyer Farm, House, and Historic Property at 178 Maple Avenue. Austin Road, including intersection with Route 17A, Cross Road, LeWalk Hill River, where, where is?
That seems kind of far to me.
Yeah, well, where is LeWalk Hill River, what, anybody know?
I would guess it's going to be at the end of Maple Avenue, at the Telesalem Bridge, you know, that's how.
Which bridge?
Telesalem, if you go down Maple Avenue, as you cross over there.
Yeah. Was that done by your consultant or by Mr. Grob?
That input was from our consultants.
Let's find out where on the LeWalk Hill River, just so we can even know. Orange Heritage Trail in Goodtime Park, Florida School or Cemetery, Church Park Historic District in the village of Goshen, Clark Road slash Fort Hill Road, District School number nine, Historic Property along 17A, Culver Randall House and Mill, a historic property at 65 Randall Street, and Winter Circle between the last two lots. Those are proposed 15 locations. Okay, comments, thoughts, if they've got anything?
Well, I mean, just like number 13, District School number nine, you know, why would you propose, put that, that seems like the.
That's the old school.
Automatic enough.
Sure, it's also because it's designated.
She looks at a database that has historic resources, environmental resources, those automatically come up, and we have to rule those out.
No, it's not, it's not ruled out yet, but they're going to take views from that location because it's historic, and then assuming that it doesn't show anything, it will then say, well, it's not going to have an impact on these historic resources.
This is one of the reasons we come to the board, if it's, you know, check the maps of resources, we want to come to the board as a local knowledge.
All right. The only other stuffs that, here there, I don't want to manage it all, is the Duchess Park.
You mentioned that, though.
Yeah, that's number one.
Immediate area along Route 17A, including northbound at the Duchess Quarry, and southbound at the Maruski Farm. All right, any other thoughts about other locations? It seems that Winter Circle has Spruce Hill covered, right? That's the, that's probably the most appropriate.
Is this where they're going to put it or not going to put it?
This is where they're going to make photos of, they're putting the tower, is where they described it in the first place, they're proposing the tower there, that's where the balloon will go up. These are the locations where they're going to go take photos, so you can see how tall the tower will be from the balloon test, and then they can, they do a simulation, basically.
How about my kitchen window?
Kitchen window. We got your farm.
Yeah, but does it make any difference that our farm is on the historic register or not?
No.
As the Department of Bloomfield says.
That would just suggest that your farm needs to be one of the locations, and it is, it's one of the locations, so you'll, you'll have a view from your farm.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure we will.
You'll have a few mirrors to look at from your farm.
From the road, it's at the farm.
Yeah, these, these are, these are always fun. Any other locations, anybody?
Are all the tests done as far as, do we have public meeting on this?
It's going to be a public hearing.
Okay, there'll be, yeah, the whole thing, this is just the beginning, they're, they're just saying, look, we want to do a balloon test to show you where it's going to be, how high it's going to be, so you can go to all these locations and see if you can see the balloon, if you can't see it from the Maruski Farm, which you will be able to see it, but if you can't see it from that farm, then you can say, well, you wouldn't be able to see it if it's 130 feet, you wouldn't be able to see it, I'm not worried about it, or I haven't worried about it, or whatever. Oh, it's definitely going to go to the committee, and it's also going to go to Mr.
Comey?
Mr. Comey, our, our consultant. But again, what they're asking right now is, do we have any other locations we'd like to see included for photographs of the balloon test?
I would like to, if I can, take a look at the area, now that I know exactly where the.
When's the balloon test scheduled?
Well, like I said, we're, we'd like to get it in before the leaves come on, I'm sure the board has better analysis. Well, there's always weather delays and stuff like that, so it'd be a little pushy, but I mean, within the next couple of weeks, if we have a couple, if anyone has a site
Okay, why don't we do that? Give us a little bit of time to run around, take the list, take a look, and see if we can take a good look.
You put it on for your next meeting, the next meeting's in two weeks, and that still would give you plenty of time before the leaves come back on the street.
All right, so as far as the public's concerned, I would ask you All right, so as far as the public's concerned, I would ask you to call the committee.
How high is the elevation of where it's gonna sit from like Route 17A? So how, does it go up and mount?
Yeah, it's a 130-foot tall tower, it's gonna be placed at elevation.
So like here's Route 17, how high?
534.
What's the road?
It's about 85, 80 above the road level.
Okay, so it's about 85 feet higher than the road level in that area. And it's gonna be 130 feet up. Okay, so 85 and 130.
The Arabs would like to see it from there, have there be a test spot from there.
Where are you looking? Yeah, we have Milburn Road, Northgate Road and Milburn, including the end of Northgate between Lot 38 and 39.
Yeah, 'cause Paul Milburn might get one of it.
Perhaps you wanna go to Milburn and, and that area there, where at the bottom of Glens of Knopf, I think, is the, the.
I think you're gonna finalize it at your next meeting. Everybody can take a look at that.
So if you will, if you have special requests, could you get in touch with the committee? And who's the current contact at the committee?
Me.
Okay, Ms. O'Hern?
What's her telephone number?
What's your telephone?
You can do it through the building.
We'll put it in the paper. Contact Holly through the building department, that's probably the best place. Contact the building department, they'll get it to Holly. Holly, you compile the list back to us within a week or so, and then we'll get it back on to the next meeting.
People who wanna have spots, yeah.
Okay, so we set something up internally after the next meeting, so that way we can turn it around, get the final list on the.
At the next meeting, we will have the final list, we're able to discuss it at that point in time. And then I guess we'll be ready. When these two talk, it usually changes something I'm gonna say.
I was just asking Sean whether or not there would be any problem from his point of view about having this listed on the staff meeting. And it can also be discussed, and then any play where members come to the staff meeting as well to discuss some of these things.
And the staff meeting is?
Next Friday.
Oh, a week from Friday. A week from tomorrow.
A week from tomorrow, yes.
All right, let's put it on the staff meeting then, and then that way.
Is that it, guys?
The regular meeting on Saturday?
No, 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 no. Set your order. Uh, no, it'll be the staff meeting a week from tomorrow. It'll be discussed and you guys can talk about it. And hopefully we'll have that through every test.
Yes, sir. Hi, I understand all the aesthetic concern, but being pushed 800 feet off the road, how close is it to the nearest residential property?
729 feet from the nearest residence.
Who is that?
I think that's one of the houses on Northgate. 729 feet.
Why don't they put it up top like one of the Marson Tower lines that already exists?
Believe me. Number one, they're gonna tell us that one of the Marson Tower lines doesn't give us the, we try to put them there every time. And basically, it doesn't give them the coverage. There's not one located where they need it, is what we've typically been told. When they come back to these particular areas, it won't give them the coverage for the area they need. And our consultant usually confirms that. So they do need one in the area typically, you know, but let's see, let's see how it goes.
Just curious.
Yes, Holly.
I just have, this is the first time I've heard of this whole proposal. With the backup generator for the tower, is it gonna be diesel or battery? Just curious.
Whatever it is, it'll be inside an equipment shelter.
But diesel tends to be a little noisier, so.
Yeah, I have to double check, I don't know if they have generator specs on there.
There are generator specs, and it does say diesel.
It does say diesel?
It does say diesel.
So you're gonna enjoy noise then too?
I'm glad you brought that up, because my next question was gonna be, your plans don't show any fuel source. There's no tank anywhere under.
Well, the diesel is a backup power, they're gonna have a telephone and electric landline as their power source. They only use 200 amps.
Your diesel generator has to have diesel power. There's no, there's no diesel tank on the plant, there's no tanks.
And a lot of installation. We don't have a large power market, you can have a tank underneath the generator itself.
Internal to the building?
Yeah.
It's gonna be inside the equipment shelter, and it's only gonna be used as a backup source. They do test it maybe once a week or an hour, just so they know it runs. But again, it'll be inside the building.
It'd be similar to having a fuel tank in your house, it's very, it's not.
Yeah, but it's very small.
I wanted to know who owns the property? Who's the owner?
Finnegan's Corner LLC.
Has your company ever looked into a little greener technology rather than diesel backup engines?
How about that?
Like hydrogen fuel cells?
Some of the carriers do use hydrogen fuel cells.
Or propane engines that don't emit as much.
Again, it's a backup, so it's really not used that often, but I can ask them to see if they're done on other sites. But I know, I haven't currently seen people using the fuel cells. But other carriers have used them, but it might depend on the equipment. So some equipment might not be as compatible, this carrier has different equipment. But I'll ask them.
Well, those are questions for Mr. Comey. When we get them to our consultant, our consultant, typically if we ask Mr. Comey, can we ask them to do that? And he will go absolutely, or no, you can't. So he's, he's a pretty good guide on that kind of stuff.
Just to confirm, he's, he's gonna be reviewing the application with respect to the radio frequency coverage issue?
They will review it to May the Z.
Okay, so you have a planner and an engineer that are already looking at it, civil engineer.
Yep.
I just wanna make sure, you know, something may overlap and really people do their efforts.
You guys didn't do that. No, they never did.
Comey, I mean, there's always gonna be some overlap, but Comey is not gonna be looking at it for purposes of the engineering issues.
No, he's looking for the coverage done, the height, what's required, what's necessary. He does argue lots of times that you say you need 130, and he may come back and say it could be accomplished.
I was gonna, so we got a planner, the visuals, the civil engineer.
Yeah, no, we don't duplicate those efforts, no. You're not gonna be double charged.
Yes, would it be okay to just get a peek at the map where it's gonna be prior?
Yeah, I mean, you'd be, oh, okay, if you can go to the back and just lay that out and show people, that'd be fine.
And so it'll be available to the building department before?
Yeah, it's, it's, there's gonna be an application in the building department, and there will be a public process for the whole thing. This is day one, so, okay? But he says he'd be happy to go back and show it to you. Yes.
Ralph, I think one of the highest points in Arch County is on the, uh, Bill Johnson's farm. The height point. Is it possible you could look at that as well?
We've looked at it in the past, and yeah, I mean, again, as an alternate, it's not exactly in this area, and I don't know that we provide them with the coverage. But yeah, we, we've sent them to the Johnsons before, and yes, they do have the highest point in the area, that rock ledge. I set it there in Deer, it's a good place to see the whole valley. But yes, they do. And again, I'll ask Comey if that's an alternate site.
Thank you.
Typically, when they're talking in these areas, they're tying it down. Yes, sir?
Is, is there a reason that it has to be pushed so far to the residential properties?
Well, one of the reasons we pushed it back so far was to avoid the impacts of 17A.
The scenic corridor?
Yes. We push it one way, well, it's a scenic, it's a, it's a scenic corridor, sir, we do have to care. It has certain protections under the code, so. So it, there is a reason to push it back into that tree line as much as possible and try to hide it as much as possible. And if that gets it closer to one unit, then, you know, it's called, it's gotta be made, but.
I could be wrong, but isn't there a, wasn't there a ridge between that property and the properties on Northgate? Isn't there?
Well, no, when you see the map. When you see the diagram, you know what I'm telling.
Yeah, I'm trying to think from ridge. It's a pretty good just shot of that mountainside, I don't think.
As with all usage, though, your goal is to protect impact to the public usage. That is where the public generally can do it. It's not, you're not supposed to single out a particular individual, maybe impacted, and say, all right, now we're going to require that that person's property be protected. That's not your role. It could, could be under the law, but it's not. The law says you're not allowed to do that. So you're there to try to protect the visual impact for the public generally, not for a particular individual.
What's the financial depreciation of properties that are located thanks to self?
Yeah, I don't know, we'll hold out for the public hearing, it's, that's all speculative now. And Mr. Comey will be able to tell us a lot more of that than anything else, so, okay? All right?
So I just, your confirmation, we're gonna send it on to Mr. Comey.
Send it on to Mr. Comey, we're gonna send it to the committee. Holly is gonna be contacted, be in your office over the next week. We'll set up for Friday for the work session. Get Mr. Comey to come to that meeting, and we'll be on board for the next meeting to have the finalized list and schedule the balloon.
So go put 17, yes.
Okay? All right, thank you very much.
I'm just gonna take them into the church office.
Anybody wants to go look at that map, can?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
How will we, how will we know when the balloon is up? How do we know when the balloon is up? Do we go out every day?
It'll be scheduled, it'll be published.
Oh, okay.
It'll be in the papers, they have to notice it.
In the Indy, it'll be in the Indy?
Uh, the Indy or Chronicle or Vogue. The Indies are, yeah, the Indies are official, Holly, so it'll be at least in the Indy. All right, next item is Heritage Estates. 249.76 plus or minus acres located on Old Chester Road Bookside Drive in HR and RU Zone with AQ6, AQ3, scenic roads, extreme reservoir overlays. Approval of conditions.
Oh, yeah, of course, Neil's gone, so it's preemptive. Well, we can hear from the applicant, this is your February 26th supplemental? Is that what, is the, I'm a little bit uncertain as to.
This is our January 24th. What we submitted to you was the final subdivision plans, the button name mitigation plans, and three or four paper copies of the SWIP and a couple on base. And what that was, that was to be the subject of a workshop within a public hearing. We had also been before the board, probably, we had January, or we had just kind of, it was a preamble, I guess, we could say, or precursor to that, but, you know, we're after the workshop that we had last week. There's been several comments, or conditions, I should say, on the, in the preliminary approval that have either been done or have, or may have impact on our joint permits that are being issued next week. And also pretty much keep us from even actually entering the site, if you recall. Or we always, we wanna start construction in the spring, and the first thing we need to do is clear some trees because we have to be that, so I sent out the 25th letter, and I had copies for the bill, identifying about eight or nine, oh, we have that? Eight or nine, eight or nine. Susie, you have everything?
Yeah.
Comments that we would like to get off the list. And so we continue to move on. And it was the feeling, I think, from the, from the feeling of Neil, we were feeling from our perspective, that we'd like to start to little, the list down from 70, 67 comments to, you know, just a few comments.
And just so, we're all together in this, when you say list or comments, you're talking about the condition of the residential.
Right, condition of the residential.
Say, you've attached a copy of the conditions?
Yes.
All 67.
Uh, it's, yeah, and what we tried to do on that, on that sort of spreadsheet is we condensed them a little bit. Some of them were a lot longer than what we've done. We condensed them to the salient points of a condition, identify the number of that condition, the action to be taken, and then who is the review and approval person, and then the status of that. Like, for example, we just looked at this on number one. If you recall, we were, we were here before the board, and I believe the first applicant, to have analyzed the site for conformity to 9741, which is the new citing requirements. And that was completed back in February 2008. So this is sort of a snapshot of all of the comment. But we're more interested in the, only these comments on this piece of paper. Because these are the ones that will have, could have an impact on our issuance of our joint permit.
There's 15.
Another 15? There's 15. Or they've already been done, we just can cross them off the list. Or they're restricting our ability to actually even access the site. So we would like to go through these, we would like to resolve these. But before I do that, I know we have two new board members, and I'd like to just, if I could, do a five-minute.
That's fine, but before you do that, though, just for the record, the listing that you have, the chart, I think the applicant did a very good job with it with respect to summarizing it. But there are some differences, I'm sure not intentional, that end up to be substantive differences between admittedly a summary and not the entire thing. So if there's any concerns about this, you need to be looking at the resolution itself versus summer. Because there are some wording changes, so most of the time, and in a few instances, they don't make any difference. In a couple of instances, they do make a difference. And it's not purposeful to mislead, I'm sure, but I just wanna make sure everybody understands that the source document is what you're wanting to be relying upon when we're trying to figure out whether or not. But I think that they did a very good job in staying true to the resolution conditions.
Can we get a copy of, I looked through my files for a copy of the resolution, and I just, I get.
I don't have electronically a signed copy, I have it in front of me, a paper copy of, but it's someone marked up, of the signed copy. But I can try to get the signed copy. If you, if there's a clean copy that someone can scan and send it around, and Neil can scan and send it around. Do you have a copy of the sign when it's clean, and you say only have a signed one, yes? I think I actually have, I have a. Okay, well, if you could scan it.
Also.
Yeah.
Sorry, Joel.
Now you're really sorry.
I can see where it's rolled.
We've seen it before. The site is the, the project's the heritage. This is Old Chester Road.
Anybody who wanna come around and watch, you have the right to come around.
Or the law.
Make sure that you see everything that's being presented, that's, I don't have a problem with that. Yes, we can go back and get a shot as well. But the reason it's done in this way, obviously, is that it's more an orientation for the two new boards.
And some of the old board members, since it's been a while. Senior, senior.
Really, only tenure he's spoken about.
Veteran, veteran, veteran. Uh, here's Old Chester Road, here's Duck Park, Dark Farm Road, and this is Old Chester Road. The driving range is right here. And if you go out on Noel Road this way, you'll head out to Craigville Road. Uh, this is what we call the Colk Farm, and then this is what we call the Active Farm. And then the Westing House, house is right here, the big, big stone house, that's right here.
So this is directly adjacent to it?
Yeah, this, uh, it's, that's sort of like an outlet outpiece of the Parma district.
And what, what you really just described, just again from your members, is a project that has received preliminary subdivision approval.
Right, what this project, the, the project so far, what we've gone through, as we've gone through, we've received preliminary subdivision approval. Prior to that, there were findings that were filed by this board through the secret process. We went through the draft environmental impact statement, the final environmental impact statement, and then this board adopted findings. After that, we then received preliminary condition. After that, we then received preliminary conditional preliminary approval, and that's, those conditions are the product of that.
That was back in two thousand and seven, was the conditional preliminary.
Since then, we've gone through a zone change, moratorium, and we've, after that concluded, we then went to the regulatory agencies for our terms. Just to let you know, in addition to this planning board and its consultants, and I can say for twenty-five years of practice, I've never had a project that was scrutinized more than this project, we were also.
You were saying that positively.
It's a positive, it's a positive, and it's a positive project. When we first came out, you know, we presented this to the board, you know, it was dubbed at one point in time as the poster child to the new zoning code. But we're also, this project is also subject to the Orange County Planning Department review, the Orange County Health Department for water extension and fertility subdivision, it's also the Orange, New York State Health Department, reviewing the water source and water treatment. Where, when I refer to the joint permit, that's the D E C permits, we have a water-taking permit, we have a stormwater speedies permit, and a wetland disturbance permit at the state level, and those are all, they've been reviewed, we've had a comment period, that, that comment period has ended, and they're, as a matter of fact, I spoke to the permit administrator five today, and she hopes to have the permits to us next week. We're also at a federal level, we've dealt with the Fish and Wildlife Services for habitat, we've also dealt with Corps of Engineers, we have Corps, we have Corps of Wetlands on here, and we're subject to a site, or a permit from them as well, and they're done with their review, the only thing I have to wait for is, and it's on one of these, is to get concurrence that you're okay with our conservation easement, because all of the wetlands will be in a conservation easement, and Mr. Orzal, of course, just wants to make sure that, that there's been an affirmative review of that from the town. The site's two hundred, just under two hundred and fifty acres, it's a cluster plan, this is an existing farmstead, there's two, this is actually, this lot's gonna, has got ten colks, he's the current owner, he's gonna retain this lot, and then this is gonna be the farm lot. You know, in developing this plan, back in two thousand and three, the town, the townwide open space report, or an open space plan, and identified certain sites and certain views and certain vistas of having, having aesthetic, being aesthetic resource for the community. The Colk Farm was one of the top contenders, contenders, or the top, top sites for having an aesthetic value for the community. So the original, so the intention was not to develop this, this is gonna be in a conservation easement, excuse me, and or a farm, or an ag, which will, that will limit, no further subdivision of the building, except for farming activities. Some of the, some of the resources, the blue areas are wetlands, we have both state and federal wetlands on site, this is the Otterkill Corridor, and then the blue, then the black meadow just skirts from the back corner of the site. What we're proposing is, what we get, what we receive approval for is eighty-one units, it's, there's thirty, seventy-six new units, seventy-seven, seventy-seven new units, and then there's four of the existing Colk Farm or the farmstead. Of this project, of the two hundred and fifty acres, we're developing forty-three, a little over forty-three acres, so we're gonna be, two hundred and sixty, two hundred and six acres of the site will not be developed, which represents eighty-five percent, over eighty-five percent of the site will not be developed. This green area here is woodland, we're maintaining the woodland, this is all gonna be part of, is part of the open space lot, this is what, open space lot A, then there's another chunk over here, this is about seventy acres, not seventy acres, it's about, it's about seventy acres. And this is the town park right here, so we've actually offered that piece of land to the town board, it lets the park, and they're not making any more land these days, so, and they've, they're receptive of taking that dedication. This land, pretty cool, you know, this is all the woodland, we preserved all of that, we avoided development there, with the exception of our little water plant, which is gonna be right down there, down in the hole, and then to protect the Otterkill Corridor, there's actually a really cool stand of tamarisk here, probably the largest stand I've seen in Orange County, they're a deciduous, looks like an evergreen tree, but they're a deciduous tree, well, to the north, conditions to the northeast. And then again, the Colk Farm, this will remain, this, this will be the homestead or farmstead location for the Colk Farm, and again, that's gonna be about, that's about another seventy acres that will be in there for the conservation easement as well. The, the main entrance is off of Old Chester Road, this is, this is the cluster plan, it's seventy-five units, and we have main entrance here, we've also connected, this is Brookside Drive, which connects to Craigville Road, it's a merge, an emergency connection, we were physically gonna connect to the road, but there'll be a gate there, so it won't be through traffic, but there will be emergency access, it's a good, good for this group of folks in the future, and it's also good for people that live on Brookside, because there is no, it's bringing along cul-de-sac, and there is no emergency access for that. One other thing, in the plan, we are preserving about the woodland, there's ninety-two acres of woodland, we're clearing about one point four acres in total, that's about a little over one and a half percent of the total woodland, the balance of the woodland will be, the majority of all the rest of the woodland will be in a conservation easement. And I think it's kind of, kind of, oh, just in terms of the pervious area that's being developed, the code has a maximum pervious area of ten percent for the site, we're just an area of a five percent, so we're just a little over half of what we're, the code, there's a pervious area.
And the circle in the middle?
The circle in the middle, the donut hole?
Mm-hmm.
That's just our little green, it's just a little open space, it's gonna be, and it's, there's a detail of that on the landscape plan, but there'll be seating areas, landscaping, basically turf area for frisbee, sitting, picketing, plant, you know, stick ball, whatever.
Yeah, I just wanted to explain.
So this will be, right, so in the center here, this is sort of the center of the village green of the plants, it will be like a common area.
It's gonna be all, all grass?
Well, up in the corner, there's a sitting area, we'll have some benches and like hardscape, some landscaping, but the majority of it, we wanted to just leave open, you know, so you could, you know, pick up games, those types of things.
Again, it's encircled in street trees.
Yeah, oh, it's really nice.
Yeah, I see, I see.
So who's gonna hold that again?
Uh, we're gonna have a homeowners association. The, like I said, this chunk of land is the town board, I believe, I'm ninety-nine percent sure, they're gonna be taking that off for dedication. This land will be owned by the homeowners association as well as the village green, and then this will be sold in full fee, but we'll have the agricultural easement.
How is the sewage being handled?
The sewage is being handled, it's gonna go, there's a pump station right here, all, all of the sewer goes to gra, by gravity to one pump station, and then it's gonna be pumped to the village.
And their new plan?
New plan, and we have an agreement with the village to receive our, to receive the sewage, and then the force main will run up Old Chester Road, and either, we'll either tie into the Hamptonian force main, or we may just, you know, parallel it, you know, that's to be determined, we'll see the condition, but that's where we're gonna go. And where we'll terminate is, when you go down Old Chester Road, right before you start to go down the hill where the cemetery starts, there's a manhole right there, and that's, that's where we'll, that's where we'll terminate and go into the system.
Okay. And where did you say the water tower is again? Right near the.
Well, just, I'll talk, we talked about water a little bit, we have three wells, there's a well here, well here, and a well there, they'll be connected to, and they'll all come to this little central facility, and that's treating, it's chlorination system, a little, there's a little contact tank, some chlorination, and then there's another, another tank right there, there's another little circle, there's details on the plans, and it's gonna be a low-profile tank, we looked at, and the turn, as part of the secret review, is having an elevated tank, you know, this is like a pretty high spot here, but I think it was everybody concluded, since it's such a small development, that what we would do is provide twenty-four hour storage in the, in the low-profile tank, and fires, we also have, we'll have our fire storage in there as well, and just have fire pumps, so if there's a draw, somebody opens up the hydrant, but, you know, once the pressure drops down, it's sort of great, the fire pump will kick on and provide fire protection.
Okay. Yeah, all right.
All right, so that's, any, any other questions? So our first comment, or condition, actually, now in my, our letter, is just the, the landscape plan, it was submitted many moons ago, but then the final plan was submitted, recent final submission, and I don't know if there really were any comments on the original plan, or, and, I don't have a chance to look at it, we just like, this is one that we think we, we probably go above and beyond what the code requires in landscaping, so No, but I can, this is the full set, but I can lay it out.
Look at that, we put right into it.
What we had is, so this is the blow-up, the cluster. And then there's a, this is, this is really the street tree plant, it's not a detailed plan, think of the street tree plant, here's the, if you can see, this is the main entrance. When we come in, it's gonna be a boulevard for about the first couple hundred feet, so it'll be, you know, so it'll be an aisle in the middle, and then we'll head, before we get to our wetland crossings, we narrow down to a single, to a single road, and there'll be some plantings there. We have two signs, or two stone walls on each side of the entrance, and we'll have a sign on that, and then the street trees, you know, just think, the ordinance for the code, you know, along the coast, this is the village, here's the village green right here.
Have you seen this?
This has the, I haven't seen this one yet.
And then this is the detail of.
All right. I've, I've, it's called Mary's, having comments about the boulevard, I'd like to at least be able to look up her comments.
Yeah, well, if you haven't seen it, I mean, by your admission, it's the town planner and the planning board, you know, review, we've got a three, three eleven date on it, which means it's today, you haven't seen it, I'm not really sure how we're gonna knock it off tonight if the planner hasn't reviewed it yet, and I sure don't want to sit here, there's fifteen conditions and review in one at a time.
I mean, I, I saw a plan like this, I don't know if it had the, did it have the detail of the wall?
Yeah, this is, yeah. Pretty much, I mean, the only change we really made from, let's say, our preliminary submission is we finalized this a little bit, we finalized.
That was landscaping to the entrance.
Landscaping to the entrance.
Which was Mary's comments.
Right.
I mean, that was, that was the big.
It wa, I remember being an issue with her.
I already knew the landscape plan, but I.
I'd like to see what her comments were, make sure at least her colleagues were, I mean, that is, she was much better at that than I.
All right.
Can we get a date to, because this is the twenty-fourth submission, Neil was kind of actually emailing us on the clarity, clarification of the process of review and timeframes, so, you know, just, if we can maybe.
No, it's, it's just, I mean, it's obviously difficult for, even if you've changed the plans only a little bit, to have plans that are.
This, 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 this plan was submitted on the twenty-third of January.
Including everything?
It hasn't changed.
Why, why is it dated the third? I thought somebody said it was.
Yeah, well, it says right here, submitted, completed three, three eleven.
No, no, that's, we were hoping to conclude tonight, that's what that date is, that was optimistic on our part, saying that we were gonna conclude that.
Oh. Yeah, I really don't wanna start trolling.
What I, what I would like to do is that have five dates to look up Mary's comments online, and then.
I think what, what would make sense.
All right.
Is if we, we can go through these things, and I think it's good for Steve to go over all of them, some actually you may be able to do, but I think we need to have at least this staff meeting and.
We had a staff meeting. We had a, we made a submission in an effort to start this dialogue.
A J.
A J.
We had a staff meeting last week, there's some key, we're, we're, we filed our N O line, right, we were the final throw, we're anticipating our joint permits next week. Neil, for one thing, I need to get a concurrence from the town on the easement, so I can get that to the board, get that permit issued, we're in, we're in the health department, we wanna start some of these things, like you have to approve the final design of the potential points, so if you have something to say about it, we'd like to have it said tonight, because we don't wanna have to go back to the D E C and delay the issuance of our permits, that's why we got this plan back, so to your consultants and to the board. So some of these will impact, some of these, there is some urgency.
And, and let's talk about them individually, but I, I guess I'm just, it's not accusatory law, I'm trying to figure out whether or not the review of these plans, knowing that you wanted an approval, was done, so the last staff meeting, you actually went over all these, and the consultants went over that and had reports and things?
The plans are being reviewed, this is the plans that we had, of course, on the twenty-fourth, we've seen them on the third, so, they are a little different, how you said, the boulevard has been detailed number four, finalized.
But it's a federal.
Recovery is what, here's your receipt, everybody there.
I mean, the changes are minor, this was gonna be a snow dump area, so obviously, we would remove a couple of trees in here, so that the snow could be pushed into this area, the changes here were minor, there's a fifteen-foot wide trail on Lot Fifty-two that was gonna be continued through, I think, those are just not, the comments were minor, but there were a couple of things.
Okay, let's go through them and see what we can and can't, on that one, I guess we will, people wanted a little more.
That one doesn't really, is not gonna impact our permits. Steve, do you want to, let me ask you this question, rather than trying to figure out one date, which may be more problematic for some things than others, and, especially if some are more critical to you, why don't we try to figure out, like, possibly two dates, one of which we can wait a little bit and go through as much of the ordinary course as necessary, and see on some of these others whether or not it can be moved up a bit? I mean, the ordinary course, it went on February third, so we should have, I guess there was no request to be on a specific planning board, I mean, I don't know why it didn't go through the normal process where it would have been heard on February, middle of February at a staff meeting, and then two weeks later at the planning board meeting, that's what I'm confused, as to why it didn't go through that process.
It would normally have been on a tenth, and I can't tell you right now off the top of my head why, we didn't talk about it, I know we did talk about it last week, I know we anticipate spending three hours or so of the staff meeting this week, pretty much basically dedicated to this project. Our, our request, that was made in January twenty-fourth, was that we were requesting spot on the February tenth workshop agenda and February seventeen, the planning board read.
And February tenth, nobody was brought up.
We didn't get on the agenda.
Normally you wouldn't get on if it's a February tenth staff meeting, it would be two meetings after that, not the seventeen, we're gonna be on.
Okay.
But we're still past it, I agree.
We're here to do what's told, yeah.
I know, but it hasn't gone through that review process, the whole purpose of that, obviously, is so the planning board can have the benefit of the consultants' comments, and fortunately, that didn't happen, and why it didn't happen, but it didn't happen, and the planning board isn't going to approve tonight, things like the landscape plan, if they haven't had.
We can live without the landscape plan.
But if you wanna have that, go through that schedule, I think that we should be on the next staff meeting, and then set up the time for the planning boards, everybody knows when it's going to be, well ahead of time, so that the planning board members are also prepared for that. So if we're going to look at the landscape plan at the staff meeting on, I guess it's the eleventh?
Yes.
Is that correct? And then it would be the, it would be until April seventh, is that all right for the landscape plan? Is that all right for the landscape plan?
Uh, that's fine.
Okay, so let's put it that for the March eleventh, staff meeting, and April seventh, planning board meeting. That way the planning board members can make sure that they have reviewed it, knowing that it's going to be on for potential approval of the landscape plan on, 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 April seventh.
Okay. Condition eight, clarification that the deed restrictions regarding ongoing protection from clearing shall be included in the open space lots on.
Also attached to my letter is a, is a standard conservation easement that, actually, we received from Kelly, but we've used it A and L, we've used it at Ocean Properties, a couple of the projects. And in there, you know, it tells us what, you know, what can and can't do with the conservation easement. The clarification, obviously, is one. And it's just the resolution, I just want to make sure that, that it's only referring to the conservation, or the, the open space.
Let me also make this a comment, because Sean brought it up before, it's an excellent comment. Some of these conditions in, in the resolution contain several issues, including condition number six. It was more, it's more in there than just approval of the landscape. There's other things in there. So when you talk about satisfying condition six, right now you're asking for the satisfaction of the approval of landscape, is that correct? Okay. So let's do that with each of these that we're going through. So condition number eight, because there's other issues other than the deed restrictions that is in, number eight, and what you want, the clarification of the deed restrictions regarding the ongoing protection.
Well, actually, let's, if you want to, what I'd like to do is, is number eight, the first, the first item is the limits of clearing and disturbance, and the posting of appropriate signage fencing during construction must be clearly designated on the final subdivision drew up map prior to approval, that such signage shall be, some signage shall be posted conspicuously prior to any site. So what we've done, what we've done on the map is we've shown the, the limits of disturbance clearly shown on the map. Those would be, you know, we're anticipating flagging those, we're not going to put fences up over those. But we are also on erosion control plan, any place where any improvements or construction or clearing or any site activity comes in kind of close to the perimeter with that line, will be set with silt fence up. So we want to just make sure that the silt fence and the work flagging in the field is adequate. And I don't think you need to show, we don't need to show flagging on trees. I don't think it's, it was the intent to have us show that on the drawing, but it can be there, but the, the disturbance line needs to be there, which is clearly on the plan. And as well as the location of all the silt fence.
And this is the.
That's the first piece of that.
But wasn't the limits of clearing and disturbance noted on the preliminary?
Yes.
Plans that received preliminary approval?
And they're on the plan that we're seeking final.
All right. We just want to have an affirmation that.
Well, here's the line, which is a little weird. It says, you know, we understand that we have to delineate the field, and, and actually, Neil is the guy that has to come out and check and make sure it's adequate. We, you know, we typically would either, if it's not silt fence that's on the erosion control plan, then it would be either flagging on trees, or stakes of some sort to delineate more of that lines. But it says that we have to show that on the plane prior to final subdivision. And it's just kind of weird that, you know, we're just going to put, I think it should be either a comment or a map note saying that that line has to be adequate when you delineate the field prior to construction, that's what we think, instead of showing it.
I don't have any problem with that. Steve's absolutely right with this site. Because of the nature of the site, the sites weren't longer, and we have some fingers of disturbance going out for the wells and pipelines. I think it's something like three miles, if you were to fence it, and three miles of fencing.
Yeah.
And, and it could be easily accomplished in a couple of key locations with a piece of fence rather than the full three miles. My question, though, was, in your letter, you talked about clarification regarding the open space, which is actually the second part of that condition.
Right, it's, it just wasn't clear, I mean, we read it, is that in the areas of open space, that that's the only, we, we didn't have to go everywhere into the block, it was just the open space lots, we wanted clarification.
That you were only going to flag on the open space?
No, 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 we're going to flag everywhere. But it says, it says, deed restrictions regarding ongoing protection of open space shall be approved by the planning board. So I just want to, so somewhere in that, and if we, I just want to make sure that it's only the conservation, the open space that regulates content of the plan.
It says deed restrictions regarding the ongoing protection of clearing and disturbance limits, which doesn't apply, it doesn't say open space. It doesn't. Clarification.
That's what I'm saying, I'm assuming it's just the open space parcels.
That's where we have the deed restriction. So I, I think that that's a proper clarification.
Okay.
Is the, is the wellhouse considered in the open space, or is that area?
It's, it's out, it's its own, it's its own lot, it's actually a parcel, yeah.
But you realize that's at such a bottom of a steep gradient, that anything we do there, you're going to just.
Well, we have clearance, clearing limits around it. We show the grading, you know, on the detailed plans, what the cutout's grading is, where the fencing, where the structures are, where the limits of clearing are there. So that's, that, that would be an area where we would, in the field, delineate that, that limit.
I think the problem lies in that the applicant has identified an area on the lots, he's not been cleared the entire lot. So he has a clearing limit line through the back of the post lot. He wants to ensure that that lot, that we encumbered later, is a deed restriction, that that homeowner will not be able to do a clearing or anything like that, is that right?
Correct. So we're not doing, so, so that restriction is really, I'm just dealing with this with us.
Which is the intention.
All right.
Okay.
You have that clarification.
Okay. And the flagging's good, we can handle that with the note, twenty-eight, we'll.
Three-nine, with regard to streetlights, the applicant is requesting a waiver of section eighty-three dash twenty-five A eight that regulates streetlight.
The only streetlights that we're proposing, we're proposing some really low vultures at the sign entrance, signs at the entrance, and three, like decorative poles, similar to what we're using in the village. Other than that, so that would just be right in here? Other than that, we're not proposing any other streetlight.
The lighting, are concerned?
Uh, we may have maybe a light or two in the seating area, but that's, that'll be it. You know, and it would just be, you know, all amounts of lighting on the houses. You know, back in the, like, when we started this, I mean, there were some concerns, I think, by the board, that you're just, the term harness estates, so we're proposing any lighting. But in the code, there's a provision, subdivision rights, that you have to give a waiver if you have a density of, whether the lots are fifteen thousand square feet or less, that you should provide, or can provide lighting for that, but.
I, I know when the lighting came up at the E R V and the Williams Command, the village lights are some of the worst lights are, as far as emitting light all over the place. They're not night sky friendly, they just, they're globes. We went out and measured the one that's out here in the parking lot, and it was like through the roof. I personally do not want to see any more of those lights, especially in there.
Well, that's why we, and it's not our, I mean, given, you know.
Well, you just said you were going to put the village light, the village light.
No.
Yeah, I, 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 I just.
But they, they come, they come shielded, we'll have them shielded, so they'll, they don't, it's not going to be a light on a stick, because I, I understand a lot of these are just lights on a stick, and they just, they go all over the place. But we can shield them to where they actually just shield, they just go down. And we had the photometric on the plan, I mean, you can see the limits of, of where they.
And that's just at the entrance down by the.
It's, it's only, it's just, just right here, just the way. And you can see that, you see the range of the, these are shielded lights.
Well, we didn't, our intention wasn't to have streetlights, through the subdivision when we reviewed it.
Right.
For.
I'll quote, I'm, I'm of a different mindset. When you have seventy-five houses in such a small area, to not light those streets, I think is asking for trouble.
Let, let me read the code provision first, which also gives you the discretion to waive. This was not my language, but this is what your code says. The following improvements will be required, and one of those deals with streetlight, except when, in the special or peculiar circumstances of a particular case, the planning board modifies or waives a requirement by specific resolutions. You have the ability to waive, but you should be doing it in some special or peculiar circumstances in this case. And what it says is the requirement that you're considering waiving, the requirement is that they have to have streetlight where lots are less than fifteen thousand square feet in area, and if you also deem necessary, they have to be at the intersections. That's the requirement, is that they have to have the light. You can waive that, and it doesn't say here, but clearly if you can waive all of it, you can waive some of it. So you have the ability to determine if less than complete street lighting, where lots are less than fifteen thousand square feet, which I assume is all of those lots, and also whether or not you need them at the intersections. So they're required to do that, except if this board says, we want something different, and the applicant.
Living in the daylight, of course. But again, I'm a bad one, the code says we're supposed to do it, so I'm a bad one, I would never do it personally.
Well, the streetlight, how are the utilities running? If that happens, really?
Underground.
It's all underground?
Yes, underground.
So you don't have to have a streetlight mounted on a.
No, not like it's covered, there won't be any.
Thirty feet in, no. You can, you can put an aesthetic seasoning lamp there that doesn't shoot upward, doesn't illuminate the side, but illuminate the, the roads and the walkways and the yards.
Do you use intersection? The directions where people are considering which way to turn.
Do you all have enough in here?
I wish we did. Right now, it's just one road up, the very top, I wish it was, and then we have one in there. Put a cluster like this, just like a hum park, areas like that, people just go in and just keep circling around and around, trying to find a location. It would be nice to have a little low inside light, even in the vicinity of the street side.
You have a nice subdivision that doesn't really have a second outlet, so the people that are in there are the people basically that live there. On a nice summer evening, if I want to take a walk down the road to go to that nice lawn area in the middle there, just to hang out on the, on the park bench, and walk my dog, I got to do it in the dark?
Oh, yeah, you're going to do it in the dark. How many units are there? And every frigging porch light, and every frigging window's got a light, it's lighting.
One thing, you know.
Living in a subdivision?
One of the things, I grew up on Long Island.
Well, that's what I'm saying. And you, and you, you walk down dark street?
No, because we have streetlights.
You didn't need them.
I don't know, maybe in Kentucky, you guys don't believe in streetlights, but.
I believe in them.
Oh.
And we shoot them out.
Well, the one thing I would tell you is that you simply can't say.
I don't like them, that's what I said, I, I'm aware of that, I'm a, I'm a bad one for it, because I would never have one, but I'm inconsistent with the code. The code says unless there's a reason for them not to be there, a very unusual, particular reason, they should be there. By the way, they say, you've got a word like that.
Curious.
Peculiar, yeah, okay. Unusual or peculiar.
I remember when you did Remington Ridge also, I kind of got shot down there, because they're also always.
Yeah.
I thought that was appropriate location for them as well.
Okay, well, if the code says you need them, and you guys, you guys all seem pretty warm and fuzzy about them, so.
I, I'm not warm and fuzzy about them, but I, I would like to see them at intersections, and I would not like to be in thirty feet in the air, I'd like to see something small where you don't even see a light pole. I do not want to see a light pole.
Right. Well, you know, right now, you know.
I think we should have them.
I don't think, it's not, it's not our intention, and throughout many of the points, I mean, you know, the houses are all going to have all kinds of lights, so you're going to have some lights in there. It's not our intention to, we would prefer not to have a, it's word harness estates, but, you know, have, have a light pole every, you know, every forty feet, but we would like to do, we can do some lighting in the center, so, you know, the lighting will be on the green, but will spill out onto the street.
If you have it in the green, you pick up that green section there, and one section here.
We can pick up this one here, here, and then we have these two pieces here.
So you're not adding that anymore light, as opposed to anyone?
Right, right. But, but the scale, what's going to happen, the scale of this, you know, when you start to light stuff, you're really going to eliminate the house, but we do have these areas, you know, here, you can light.
Yeah, the intersections.
That's right.
But the intersections and around the center, common area.
Yeah, we'll keep them.
I assume you're, you're going to have it where the emergency exit is, as well, at that intersection.
I'm guessing that the, our neighbors probably want to.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about that, where your road is, not, not necessarily down at the end of it.
Not the end.
Not the gate, I'm talking about where the emergency access leaves, you know, at the end?
From.
Yeah.
Right.
Were you planning on that or not?
No, no.
What, having a light there?
Well, it's up to you. I mean, it, it.
Well, there's going to be gates there with a lot, I would think you'd have to have some type of light, even if it's not a huge one.
It's up to you.
There's a fire zone up there.
You'll have plenty of lights there.
Plenty of light.
Spotlights.
I don't know.
It's a road, children can congregate, teenagers can congregate, cause problems, there's a light for these people.
Well, the other thing, isn't there also access, and does it hurt all of that?
Well, I think, I mean, I guess to be fair, I mean, what, what this is requiring is street lighting, you know, where there are lots of fifteen thousand square feet. At that end, there's no, no lots of fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand square feet, and I think the intent here, or Neil obviously will be weighing in, but I think the intent here is to have lighting where there are homes, the small, homes on the small lot.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'll agree with you certainly. Just, just looking at counting for you, intersection, so it looks like you have separated intersection, depending on whether you count that one circle up there. But I was just thinking about separated intersection between the, so I was not counting as an intersection, the one going down to the wellhouse. The only person who could, that should be the board of the public, the board at.
Okay. That's the input you're looking for?
That's the input I was looking for.
So how many lights are there to put at each intersection? Is it one light at each intersection, or each corner?
It's going to, based on the, that, we'll have to design each one, it depends, I mean, each light has a, did they have, you know, a certain coverage, and it's just a matter of that house and the trees and the.
Well, you're going to put the same type of light that has the same type of coverage, right?
Absolutely, yes, yes.
So depending how big an area you want to cover.
Cover, right.
And which room we have.
Because you don't want to illuminate the house.
All right, so do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Well, we got to need, we got to take an action, because we're basically reducing the lighting requirement.
Yeah, I think that, well, you, you have to do it, whether you do it right now, which I would think is appropriate, I'm sure the applicant would appreciate it to certain extent, but there has to be a waiver. You can certainly waive it now, you don't have to wait till the very end of the process to waive something. So if you want to waive it now, I think you want to waive it, say, that you're waiving it in accordance with this particular provision of the code, and you want it at, I mean, you designate where you want the street light. So until it's going to be, it doesn't do much, quite frankly, as to condition of a none. Condition number nine wasn't about where to put them or anything, it was simply that when they were there, you had to have the shields to reduce the sky elimination, et cetera. And it's another issue that doesn't deal with streetlight in that condition, low reflection windows. So it's not really going to change none, except that this will probably be put into now, right?
All right, well, then, did I have a motion that we, we waived the lighting requirements as per section eighty-three dash twenty-five A eight? We, to reduce the lighting to the proposed entrance as, as designed, as well as the common area and the intersections, probably what is it?
But not change the type of light?
No, we still don't keep all the conditions of the type of light, you know, with the shielding.
It's just adding, right.
It's not going to take anything away.
Do you have that?
Can I do that again? Because I don't even get it. I know, a two guy, and that's the most important, but if I could get it for a resolution program.
Okay, a motion to waive, to waive the lighting conditions set forth in section eighty-three dash twenty-five A eight, regulates street lighting, to reduce the lighting within the heritage subdivision to the entrance. heritage subdivision to the entrance as proposed, and to lighting at the intersections and around the common seven areas in the center of the city.
Mr. Chairman, do you want that one rotary? Do you want that included in the intersection? The rotary, that is the top left portion that has the three bulbs over there?
I would say no. I mean, first one. I think that's not really an intersection. Let's count the intersections so that way-
Yeah, I was including the rotary. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Well, main intersection.
One.
I think, I think it does-
Two, three, four, five, six, seven.
And let us just take a look at, we may or may not put a light in there, depending on how we're- Now, when we say the seven intersections?
And we're gonna eliminate, we don't want the water, I don't think we want the water.
No, don't want that.
When you say, when you say around the middle green, do we have some kind of indication as to how far apart they are, what margin they are?
Uh, well, we're gonna, we'll keep them down-
If I don't see in the code-
No, there's no point. We'll keep them down to probably no brighter than forty.
I'm thinking more about spacing.
Oh, well, it's, that's, that's-
That's, that's Roger speaking.
Yeah. All right, well, that's how you want it to be done, rather than visually counting. Holes are out there, that's up to the board, but I would like to have it clarified so that we don't have further discussion. That's what I'm saying.
James, are we talking about short balls, maybe fifteen feet long, his life reset? Huh? Something with a life reset underneath the top of the dome?
Um, will we have a cut sheet for it?
Yeah.
That's included in you?
Yeah. At the entrance, we're about seventy-four feet.
Seventy-four feet?
Do you have it home over there?
Well, they're both in. They're not known, I mean, it's based in the set and plan, if we're on a photo metric.
Is it one day after one week?
So you're probably gonna have one, two, three-
More lights, just then more lights in each area and your wall.
Yeah, that's what we've got. We've spun around.
Yeah, you're probably gonna have, I would say, we'll have one, two, three, four, five.
You say no less than five?
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause that's gonna set that hole.
All right, just say to no less than five in the common area.
How about, how about the, something like, the design is based on the light, you know, fourteen foot hole, six foot hole, seventeen foot hole, the wide is to illuminate there. Why don't we say that it's satisfaction of the candidate or something?
And just, 'cause, you know, we have another applicant that hates that.
Yeah, I know.
I think you're weird.
I know him well.
Can we not already design a lighting plan yet?
Yeah, yeah, I have a good idea. I got the idea.
And the code, the code is like up there where that loop is out, right? So everybody-
Well, I'm just gonna look at it.
Gonna look at it.
Something that makes sense.
So who's gonna make the decision? Steve or will come back to the board?
We'll propose it. Can I make a motion?
There is a motion on the floor.
There is a motion?
We have a motion on the floor at the moment. All right, it was made and it was seconded, right?
It has a second on it.
Yeah, it's made, did it leave seconded, all those in papers.
Discussion?
Yeah.
You're sure?
Well, yeah, look, I have a vote, though, I mean, I'm a member of the board. I just think that we are trying to set limits to justify wavering the requirement that's in the town code. I just think we should just, the town code was written for a reason. I think we should just leave the town code as is, not waiver it, and leave it as is.
But they gave us the option of waivers, so it's very difficult to commit to changing and make that, and it may be one. And you have, the code is written, in this case, we give a lot of flexibility, not a limit, but a lot of flexibility. And there may be some kind of plan where you have quarter acre lots or smaller, a bunch, and then ways away, another bunch, ways away, another bunch, and maybe in those intersections, one run right by all of those. Here, you have a situation where you have a lot of density, a lot of density, relatively for this area. And if you want, which we do, but if you want, that could be your special reason, given a particular layout, the density of these particular homes in this particular lot.
The advertised, I mean, lots is what? Under fifteen thousand?
Or less than fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand.
But the purpose of having light, lighting in the code for under fifteen thousand square foot lots is what?
I can't tell you actually. I don't know. Neil would be the first to interpret it, and somebody didn't like that, so he deviated.
They wanted to make it community friendly so people could walk or whatever?
Well, let me explain. I think the fifteen thousand comes from an idea that once you get down to fifteen thousand square foot lots, you're more in a more suburban area, and it's an area that's kinda likely to have sidewalks, people walking, people walking at night, some places to walk to, and these are normally a point at which you would start to require the sidewalks and street lights.
Are there sidewalks in this?
Yes.
And what, what, okay, by eliminating this and having, and having these lights here, what will that do? Will that, will that give you anything other than just aid people from driving in and figuring out what kind of, where they are, you know, the house they were in? It's not gonna encourage people to walk, right?
Well, I mean, that's both the decisions that you have to make. I think the town board made the determination that, again, it probably states a very rational basis as to why the town wanted it there, not knowing that was perfectly true, but that certainly is correct. And you have to determine, for instance, it's not ought of, you can waive just that to the intersection, you can just require it to the intersection under this, in addition to where they are. Now, I think that you have to take into consideration, relative to which way you're going down the road, on a waiver, you have to take into consideration the particular configuration that's important. For instance, if the open area was over here rather than in the middle, it may make a difference as to where you want placement of these lights, because if people are presumably congregating in the green areas, the most likely area, and will be traveling, you may want to have it lit in that area where they will be traveling to, rather than some outline area. These are the things that you have to consider in the course of making your decision on a waiver, and then determine how much you want to waive.
See, the way that actually we're doing it, the intersection, so why are we putting a light on the next door, homes to the town?
Not really. Look at this, this intersection right back in there. If I live in that house on Lot sixty-nine, and I wanna go to the, and I wanna go to that green area, and it's nine o'clock at night, where's the first light pole that I'm gonna find?
Yeah.
Okay. Just because the house has a light in front of it, doesn't mean to switch that to be on.
No, the probability-
Red light will be on.
The probability that all the lights would walk, it's not likely either. I mean, people turn off at this time of the night.
Some people don't even turn them on, especially with the cost of energy, you know. Right?
You'd be able to pan and support it.
Listen, that's what we're building.
That's what we're building. We're just making the decision. We gotta vote, let's-
Can I say something, again, actually, a question for it. If, let's say we just do the street lights on the intersection. What I see is people come up and they put like every light that they can buy at Home Depot along their driveway, I mean, it's like, I think you're more asked to have more light if you don't put lights in. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm just-
I mean, it's a fairly rural area out that way. I think you put a whole bunch of light, and I think you're looking at, you know, it's gonna look out of place. And I think with these people in that development, I mean, I'm not a big light fan, so, well, Long Island grows in the dark, in space, you know?
Listen, I understand, I understand, but we, you're saying it's a rural area, but you're building a high-density subdivision in a rural area. I mean, the zoning is the zoning. It might be a rural area, but you have seventy-five houses in like a few acres there.
But you're gonna have-
There is gonna be street lighting, you know?
No, we're saying we're not gonna require it.
How about it? How about, I guess the direction of the board, let us propose something, and make a decision then. How's that?
I've got a motion, but that doesn't work. It's disgusting now, I got a motion, I'm getting a vote on this anyway. I'm listening to this, yeah.
If I could, I live in a development, a new development, three years old. About half the size of this, the lot size is our example. We have street lighting, but it hasn't been activated yet. From your standpoint and from what I do in my development, the street lights are on during the night. Definitely need it from a safety standpoint, that's the question. There's usual cues, drivers to slow down, intersections, and something of this size on the behind end zone. We have people crossing the street, we have people walking back and forth, and the lights encourage people to slow down, look for a back-
And the board engineers are in the process of the agreement?
There is, all I need is the confirmation with the easement, the town, and then it'll take the easement. So, yeah, I would prefer to have that, file it in town, as many additions as possible and, and-
And ours is also easier, I mean, out too. At least that's what they said.
Typically does not fog.
Yeah. Why is it that's a good deal to put this one on?
No, it's more expensive for you than it is for public. Yeah, they appear, but I'm surprised, well, it's not streaming up on that here.
It's not streaming.
Because D E C is-
There's no defined channel.
Really?
No.
You're not getting a stream across the block. Yeah, you don't need it. So essentially, it's bad, you're worried, but something is going on.
It's not like there's a defined channel and then-
Yeah, it's weather.
My, my one question aside, I'm hoping to open March, is that plan does show heck days. I think we probably need more of a head of, of the heck of it. When you say heck days, I think a lot of people are going to be hot, and I think it's just a cycle at any time, or, or-
Well, maybe it's maybe it's more of a head warm and head wet.
Yeah. Especially apple oil, you know, yeah. So, let me come back to me and pick up a hand.
Because, I mean, is there, is there, they're getting D E Cs for, for permit approvals to both, and they've obviously considered extension impact to the right end. I would, I would have preferred an archway over it to maintain integrity, because it's a lot better for animal feedings or anything else.
I like-
Do we have that flexibility to those? No, D E C is not gonna have a problem with we were to go with arch. You changed it from pipe to an arch, you know?
The only, you know, typically when we do arches, it's just a defined channel, somewhere it's a defined, I mean, this is flat, there's no, there's no definite defined-
Well, it's just the-
It just was brought up at the very beginning, a long time ago, we didn't segregate the wet lane.
Yeah, it's just limited wetland, and you put the huge span of the distance of the wetland to grow the water.
And I think if the town has to maintain it, it's gonna be a lot easier for an arch than a-
Yeah, an arch is not gonna fog or do that much of a spike on things.
Let's do the arch, right. Do the arch and will, if it's gonna be changed to an arch, then I think we can waive that, I think we can change that to however you wanna word it. The arch supports, well, then litigation be approved by town, you know, planning board?
If you want an arch, I don't think you need to change it there.
All right, well, we, I want an arch. That's why the arch, that's why it was there.
Is there anything else in the litigation that you're requiring approved?
You're gonna do that arch, and that's it.
So it'll be considered, if it does the arch, that that condition is satisfied?
Yeah.
An arch is not approved?
Yeah.
Well, you change it to an arch, and you commit to do the-
It comes off of that part, but the condition is removed. You're talking about when returning this to be fine, that this will not appear correct.
Correct.
Now, I don't know if anybody is falling in love with these numbers. I have not. So that, it makes sense if we are eliminating more than one or two when we get to a condition of fog. It makes sense that we just eliminate those and renumber them.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Okay, thirteen requires that the town engineer and planning board approves the SWIFT. Well, the state is to approve, state D E C is to approve. Sorry, approve, there is some, issuing your, in the whole house?
We've already filed it.
We also have a, we also have, it's one of those function conditions, isn't ours different? It's like a short version of it? I believe something like that.
Do we have a, what?
No, yeah, it was-
Typically, I just wanted, because boards go all on the same page, typically, it's a general permit, so it's not a specific permit like you would get in, let's say, a point source, like a sewer plant, something like that. The state says if you follow the practices in our manual, the design manual, and care notice of intent, then certify that you've done the SWIFT, you're covered in the permit. The state typically does not approve the SWIFT. Some, they have the right to call for it and then review it, and I think you send it to the state and you can work with them.
They reviewed it actually?
They reviewed it because it's part of the joint commitment, although that's, you know, when we file more than one method, that's another one, so they've done a technical review on that.
They had a whole comment.
Yeah, but we did review it as well, right?
We received it under the January twenty-fourth cover, which we dated that it was approved. We reviewed it, however, there's conditions the applicant discussed tonight, and that will affect the SWIFT. So we're prepared to give the applicant comments on it tomorrow, first thing next week, that we have to address the eligibility first, they relate to the groundwater recharge and whatnot, that could impact what practices they utilize.
Can this also be one discussed, three eleven staff meeting in four seven, planning board, and say? If there's substantive changes, we're, we're more in a fight for the permit, changes in mind, and effective measures, and we would-
A lot of the comments being done, you know, it should happen tonight, regardless of your, and we did get some-
The problem that you have, Steve, is that it must be done by the planning. That's right. That's why we're here.
I know, so I mean, if, if you can live until four seven, then the planning board can like the landscape, try to make a decision at that time after you've already submitted it through Sean and get it on.
Yeah, I'm clear. We intended to clear it before March, because we can't even access the site without these, and I know it's not a problem with the board, but, you know, when we go to April, we're gonna have to-
Now, let's see, let's see if we can get over the ones that keep you from accessing the property. I mean, if we can get out of the ones that do that, then maybe we can go ahead and start these things, you know? But let's specifically get to the ones that keep you from accessing the property and will keep you from doing your clearing before the end of March.
Number twelve is key. Then we have to-
All right, but she just said you'll do an arch, so that one's, that one's good. So that one's out of the way, as long as you commit to the arch and your mother-
Thirteen is, yeah.
Thirteen?
But we'll have to come back to that.
Okay.
To twenty-two, we just present the plan.
Okay, this is the groundwater recharge one.
And it's under technical office, right?
Well, let, let's just, I mean, here's our position, you know, as I stated earlier, you know, we're, we're committed by code to go up to ten percent of the site, which is fairly all. You know, we're not, we're not developing, you know, someone's doing, you know, the site, you know, preserving eighty-five point five percent of the site that's developed. I mean, we- that's developed. I mean, we, we, this, the reason why we plus it, the reason why you adopted this type of building is to preserve land for recharge. And I think we've learned that beyond the other way. Uh, number two, uh, we've reduced the development footprint from the preliminary, preliminary approved plan. If you recall, last time I was here on our, on our preview, when I handed out these two maps, these two maps, here was the original preliminary approved footprint. Here's what we're proposing now. We reduce the footprint by almost negative, so we, you know, we preserve more land for recharge. Uh, we're proposing, uh, in areas of the estate lots, the water treatment area, and well, access road, where we can.
The organic, uh, filters.
Organic filters.
Oh, the leak matter?
Yeah.
Which, which promote infiltration. Um, we're creating twice, we're, we're creating twice as much wetlands as we disturb, so we're creating more wetlands. Why do we preserve wetlands? Because wetlands are key for groundwater recharge. So we feel we, we present to the plan that encourages and protects the land for groundwater recharge.
Okay, well, do the boards think that the reduction?
And one other thing, we're not really seeing the letter, stuff like you're saying about him, he has a picture of, uh. The rain barrel. Everybody gets a rain barrel out of closing. A barrel.
I don't know, I don't know, most of it's done to recharge, they, uh.
No, you trap the water, then you put it in closely, slowly.
No, you use it during dry times, so it doesn't recharge. It evaporates, you get it taken up by the plant, so that one, probably. Finally, someone that they say a rain barrel will recharge has, uh, can't be, the opposite. So, but.
Our question with the condition was that the condition was based on the former plan, was very similar, obviously, to the pond, and it wasn't the night. So whether the changes be approved or not.
Actually, Sean, please, I don't think you might face a property perspective. The plan, there is a substantial change from the originally, from the preliminary approved plan, when we came in and discussed this with the board, like, you know, and that is, if you recall, part of this was set up as a T and B, and we had rear loaded, the rear loaded, you know, alleyways. I mean, we substantially reduced the amount of the previous surface that you approved during the preliminary. So that's another thing. At the expense of redesigning, you know, eliminated all that, the previous surface. So that's, it's a big change from the plan, you know, that the applicant took upon himself to do in concurrence with the condition.
Okay, and that was getting ready to say. All right.
Again, this was based on the current plan, it's similar, I think, to the immediate plan. Uh, we don't know if this needs the level of recharge that you were looking for throughout the year. Uh, right now, there really are no, other than the open space there, is there really are none of the practices that you specifically were, you know, dry well, uh, and there's minimal, uh, reinforcement. In fact, I'm not sure if the details are ten of the on that, but there's some connection details. I think it's been connected to the storm. Uh, the terrain, so the, the, uh, and then the, the, correct, but not just starting to create, I do this, so.
Okay.
This condition does not require arch.
Okay, well.
But based upon your, based on your.
So they could, they could put in dry well?
I think there's some spots that I would not recommend dry well. The lots are very close. We don't wanna put them where it could cause basement flooding problems. But some of the spots around the periphery are high, they ran away towards the pier. I think you probably could put a dry well, especially if they take a position or certain, so there's something that promotes, uh, groundwater.
So you're talking like from lot four to lot fifteen?
Well, can I, one of the things is if you list from lot fifteen, if you lot four to lot fifteen, this will wouldn't, we're actually gonna, everything's supposed to that way. I mean, those could all, those could all.
I, well, absolutely. Right now, those lots, move from, from those lots, well, they could go to grade, but right now they go into the pond. They, the pipe collection system that, right now, is a disconnection to that pipe system to let it go in a.
And, 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 and it's the woodland, you know, and then it's down, and then it ultimately goes into the.
I, I would sooner see that, and let's have a look for the pond, just to see if it ends up and.
I think, uh, the way the grading works, I think you could probably do it on all of lots of the periphery. I have not the ones over there.
Do you not think, we could do one, two, three, three, one to fifteen, so there's fifteen lots, right?
And then, and, uh, seventy to seventy-five also. Okay, with those as surface, with those as surface discharges, the reduction of the additional acre, um, the elimination of the alleys, and the, uh, and then the, uh, discharge to ground for the areas that are identified, we believe that those are adequate to, to fill the requirement as of course, in addition.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
The alleyways, though, were modified prior to.
No, no, they were preliminary. All right. So we, let me call the board. Lee, please, okay? Done? If it's, you're done? Done? Okay, if you all agree with that, then then you make that adjustment.
What it will be is similar to the arch, if in fact you make those changes to the plan, then we'll consider that that condition is satisfied.
Right. And twenty-six, applicant has provided on sheet four, uh, twenty-four lands to be dedicated to the town for future road improvements along the lower road.
Which one?
Twenty-six.
That's right, uh, right here, if you recall. One of the things, you know, during the environmental review, is, uh, the one, the town has requested a piece of land right on that, that's where the sharp turn is on the road.
Cause it's softening it out.
Yeah, it's like a little less than four, point four acres, so that's, that's described in the subdivision plan, it will be filed, uh, in its office to dedication to the town, and that's will also fall for that dedication.
You're saying you've now fulfilled that condition of one?
Well, when it's filed.
Well, it's on there now, right? It wasn't on at the time, it's not.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
Put it on recently.
Okay. So that's gonna be the same thing. Uh, just like the most revised plans, that you now have a plan, uh, to satisfy twenty-six. Uh, so that will be eliminated, however the easement still shall be filed, that form filed.
Yeah, that, that part.
You'll see in your.
There you go.
So what was the second part of that? Then wanna make sure that the board is there on it. Uh, the applicant must provide a plan of areas for widening or realigning, or students affecting the. I just wanna make sure that you're not looking for a plan with realignment working.
Okay. No, it was just a base from the town, not a realignment. All right. Condition twenty-seven, review erosion and sediment control plan and SWIP regarding measures in the design of the site, and the measures should be used during construction to protect Otterkill, Black Meadow Creek, vegetation, wildlife, and wetlands.
Um, we have an envi, we have an erosion and sediment control plan, part of this package, it was submitted with the SWIP to the D E C. Just in terms of the layout, I mean, again, here's the Otterkill. Uh, we have, you know, a small area here, we're gonna have a temporary crossing also of the water line, but basically this, all of this land right here is gonna be under the conservation, uh, to be preserved, uh, which we just think, you know, just in terms of layout, you know, and through design, and we successfully kept a nice chunk of land there for conservation. Uh, and the same thing over here, this is, you know, the Black Meadow, other than the well, you know, the well, you know, I expect it's a little bit.
Have you reviewed the erosion control plan?
Yeah, they were, all planned, all under the SWIP. Second, we just got to tie in a little bit to the, the one on the SWIP that we discussed earlier, but, yeah. Uh, there is an erosion control plan in there, and it was added.
Okay. Okay.
So the board then is considering that that condition is satisfied?
Do we agree?
Yes.
Everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, there we are.
That was twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Condition thirty-one, planning board to approve declaration of conservation easement, copy provided by Kelly, not here, Martin, Esquire attached.
Yeah, attached to your letter, it's a few pages. It's one, it's, we've used it for A and L, we've used it for each property.
Just so that you didn't think that Kelly was ignoring you. She is ill, and several days, but told her that she needed help.
She's been ill a lot, honestly. She's definitely dead, but we won't go.
I think a woman was.
And if you tell her I said that, shit. All right, took a cheap shot.
You did.
Okay. Um. Now, did we, did we, we did approve the declaration, right?
No, it's, it's, it's one that our office, and this is subject to.
There's one.
Yeah, this is the one that's subject, you have said, it's fine, you know, the areas you've designated, but as to the easement itself, you say it has to be to our satisfaction. And we do the same one, in the preparing minor circumstances every once in a while, with the same language as all of the subjects, and we've approved the one.
Okay, well, it is still.
Yes.
We do, but it's.
I can't say that.
But it's, uh, but this is the condition set plan for, so we did.
Okay, all right. So we, I'm aware of agreement that the council is, is good with it, we are too.
Yeah.
Soil modification. It had to do, as my recollection is, it had to do with soft action, there is description. When we, when we build it, we're gonna do, we're gonna do, you know, the mass excavation, you know, the tough and build, that's gonna get stabilized, and then we're gonna start doing, moving, building, building, building units. And, but we'll basically be working, some areas that'll get stabilized permanently, we'll put, we'll put, you know, minimum orange tops going on those areas, that, you know, we're gonna be like a list area here, they'll get stabilized as we, you know, build out that tape. Um, what we're proposing to do is, what we typically do is, when we're ready to topsoil those areas, is we're, you know, we're working off the subgrade, so before we topsoil, we'll scarify that area, usually scarify the top a couple inches of the subgrade, so it's softened, uh, you know, and then refer up for it to topsoil the top of that. And that'll, that'll, you know, there won't be a layer, the separation between the materials and the metal, so it'll take, you know, absorption and grain.
And then you get one free story, you're good. So, that's our proposal, uh, and basically we would just do that in detail or map note?
This is an ongoing, uh, I, uh, so it would, I don't see how the condition could be completed tonight, it's something that we're gonna have to do later, uh, so essentially we'll do, you know, exchange, I think, this is conditioning approval through a map note.
I'm just looking to say, it says plan, and I don't really, I can't figure out how to like make a plan to show you that, but I can tell you, I can show you detail, or I can make a map note to say, yeah, we're gonna scarify top, 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 subgrade.
So a map note or a road book?
Map note or they.
How about a map and note, acceptable?
How about that map?
You can go up to pretty swift.
Who's the red?
Either one, if you're satisfied with the map note, and map note is fine.
Not a map.
If there are map notes that's included, I have not been.
I just, what, what we, what we're proposing to do is that we'll say, prior, prior to topsoil, the sub, the subgrade will be scarified, uh, you know, top, I think, the top two inches will be scarified, and, and a uniform layer compacted topsoil for.
Okay, one of us with the map note says.
That's just a question. What's the maximum amount that you'll have to take off? I mean, to make this buildable?
Total cut and fill?
Yeah, in terms of feet max, where the areas, you know, four, five feet, six feet?
There is, but there's a couple spots where we're, we're down like sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet? And that's where you.
But that's where putting the buildings.
Yeah. How about exactly where you're gonna build it, and what's your action?
Um, one of the things, John, that we did, if you recall, in the preliminary plan, we had two pump stations, uh, one pump station here and one pump station here, and then working with Dennis and Sean, you know, we looked to get rid of one, two, so we do get some cuts and fills in here, uh, and we were able to eliminate that one pump, one of the pump stations. And the, the biggest cup, which is right on the knoll there, is about, about twelve feet. So about ten foot.
We cut that ten foot, we're not even, probably seven grass.
No, there's some reason.
Do you see problems about the pump stations? I just don't remember seeing anything on the pump station.
You mean the design?
Yeah, anything. You know, where they are, or.
Oh, well, there.
Also, cause I know a lot of you have problems with smell.
Right, well, if you look, if you look on sheet, uh, seven, it's the best one. Yeah, and, and, and we, reason we picked that, sheet seven, the reason we picked that is just that very reason. So what, and one of the reasons why we have it here, you know, with the, with this.
Okay, if it does, if it does, do you think with the patch and keep it does fail?
Well, you, the design and Sean or Travis. Oh, it's, 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 the safety factor, well, there's redundancy in the, in the pump stations, right? There's two pumps, twenty-four hour storage.
Lock, yeah.
And, uh, and.
There is, there's twenty-four.
Is it twenty, do they still have twenty-four storage?
For the, for the. We're gonna work with, uh, with the town engineer, because this is something that the, the town will be taking over. Pump stations right now, we have not received a detailed design of the pump station.
Could, can I get a copy when you guys do this?
That's fine.
Can she get a copy?
I'd like to get a copy down the pump station stuff, yes, I could, um.
We're important, everybody.
Okay, that's why I was concerned, but I just figured maybe I missed it some more.
No, right now the location, very similar to the design, but the actual interior of the pump station is still being, uh, denied. Well, we met at the staff meeting, that was one of the items, so, uh, explain, uh, so our, our preferences with the applicant, uh, Roger, so I was a gentleman president.
But, cause that's the other thing, if they can rotate, separate, I don't know.
Okay, that's one that can go to three eleven, though, because that's not gonna keep you from doing anything.
No, 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 that's, and we're, you know, if we actually revise the plan to eliminate two of, one of the two, and now we've got the location, we've got the grade set, if we go to the final. Uh, condition thirty-eight.
What about thirty-seven? There is thirty-seven, there is a thirty-seven on it. What, you're making a lot now, at a time?
He's following along.
The lot, the lot comes along. Um, the, the bottom line, which says, there's gonna be one sidewalk between lot thirty-eight and thirty-nine, that's the, the post to the trail.
No.
It's not thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
No.
Now, is that, is that, well, is that the street, was that statement right? Cause those, is that where we're supposed to go to the other road? And what trail is it talking about? Is it going by a trail into the town port?
Well, there was a trail to our site, uh, which is next one.
Oh, wait, no, that's.
There's a trail, it takes you to the trail.
Okay, so the, the lot normally the long, but it was long.
What's it right? Uh, well, I'm not sure, uh, since right now, it's really in the function of where the trail ends up, if it ends up, if it ends up, if it doesn't end up. the trail ends up, if it ends up, if it ends up, if it doesn't end up, then we get the road.
Yeah, but the lots are, the trail is shown, is not between lots thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
Oh, no, they all got shown around.
Get the right...
All right, we're not, we're not really, I'm not really worried about that, we have to work with the town board to resolve that, once we're that resolved, we'll get the right number.
All right, so you know, though, just get the path between the...
Well, there's a bunch of that, that relates to, like, lot ninety-seven, but...
Condition thirty-eight, private roads, pertaining to private roads. This section of code is not a foot, so the codes are gonna be dedicated.
Well, I think that condition was required because of the alley, the alley's been eliminated, so...
So, we agree that that, that is no longer a condition of concern?
Yeah.
Okay, that one's gone. Forty-two, planning board must approve the design of any crossing of the wetlands and streams. Okay, well, we just did, that's the arch, right?
It's the arch.
And we fulfilled that.
Or are there any others?
Yeah, that, that's the point, are there?
Uh, yeah, there's, well, there's, there's a, the main crossing, there's wetland crossing, and then there's a temporary stream crossing.
Different stream crossing, we already...
Which is...
That's for piping.
That's the pipe.
Okay, well, that one will last, be done, it's, it's...
Right, no permit required.
Right, and the other one is, uh, is the end, okay, we didn't ask, they asked that.
It was a discussion, we'll find out, by that one well, I think there was, uh, one line going into, well, had to pop there, coming over, you know?
Oh, you're...
Are you going that now?
No, 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 they're still going through there, that's another temporary, there's a wetland eight.
Yeah, I think, I think at that point, we were talking about, I think, seizing it, and then...
Underneath.
Underneath, so that they, they, a larger pipe in there, and then run the one, otherwise what they ran into the thing, and you just went, like, three, yep, pick it up again? That was a conversation, I'm not sure if you still want it about it. I'm not sure if they're both there.
I, I personally don't remember that one, I, I don't know.
I think the mic does.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, it's fine, it's not a problem doing it.
Okay, yeah.
Would you put two, two inch one?
Or just, just thirteen one?
You're two inch one, you would put two lines, and then, you know, ask for one, they're gonna need...
Okay, uh, we put the two lines in, and we believe that I did, so we, we approved it. Planning board must approve the design of any crossing of the wetlands and streams.
And we did the arch.
We did the arch, and we did the engine, and then, too, about our way, public access. So, that's okay. And now, we're just talking about the temporary crossings, that they need to have two pipes. They double piped us, all right, to allow for... So, the whole point of that is, you got a pipe laying there, it's the one pipe crack?
You can just, you can just...
Where you don't have to excavate the wetland.
Why would the pipe crack?
Just put a trap on it.
Get, uh, fill up in there, for some reason, like, settlement, a little bit...
So, it wouldn't be like rusted through or something?
No, not...
All right, then that, that's acceptable, the customary measure, whether it has a...
From the waterway, yeah, for it, from the wetland.
From the wetland, uh, water. But I tell you what, I kinda like the sleeving a little bit better, 'cause you're not, if you're gonna weigh a double pipe, you're gonna ask to dig the wire, slot through the wetland.
No. Uh, but two inch pipe, uh, one foot button.
All right, all right, good, all right, then that's...
Actually, sleeving would be difficult, because you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to snake along, you're gonna have to, you also did excavate two big pits inside of it.
All right, all right, okay. All right, so we have approved the, uh, the crossing, the...
Double pipe.
End stream. Okay, fifty-two, planning board must approve this, a word I can't say, Kentucky, cannot say that word, the design and the shape of stormwater basin.
Sean, I have a question about this, too, Steve, okay? Unfortunately, my computer kind of crunked on me, but they have a thing of designing, and I know this sounds crazy, 'cause I've never seen it before, but there's a certain way, they say if you have the basins going, like, I'm just throwing this up, it's like northwest or something, there's a certain direction that you can put them in where it's supposed to keep the temperature lower. Have you seen this?
No, I haven't, uh, I'm just trying to increase...
That's all I'm doing, and it's not, uh, you know, can I just send you this stuff a little bit, and then let you make the judgment, I'm sorry, you don't have it tonight.
Of course, uh, we'll look at it. What I can say about the ponds are that they are, the advocate probably use the design manual that has longer, you're trying to elongate the full path of the pond, they've done that for some of the pond scoring, they've worked some of them, or if you have a pond, to kind of make a secure route as much as possible, um, and tell you, if they tried to make the ponds bigger, they'd have to expand the limits of disturbance and whatnot, so, I mean, balancing the factors, so, usually the limits of disturbance, while simultaneously trying to get the longest path possible, so, that's what they've done.
I just wanted to, maybe, maybe...
Okay, so, but have we approved the specific design and shape of the stormwater basin?
I'll see you.
You can, this one looks a little bit like a snowman. Uh, John, John. But now, I know you're a contractor, man. All right, uh, are we satisfied with the design of the basin?
I'd like Sean to tell what he's saying, and Mike even, I'd like to copy it.
It's just two of them, right?
Three.
There's, uh, there's a small one by the entrance, right?
Oh, okay, here, I think, yeah. One here, and then one in the way back. Was there something that you had in mind, specifically, when you were doing, you know, land picking perspective, or a, like, rock perspective?
Yeah, we were, yeah, I think it was primarily a land picking. So, we have shell, and embedded...
Everything, everything, that's planted.
All, they're all planted, they have plants, you know?
They're wet, where you can, with, planting shelves, and making shelves, and no trees, uh, no trees and shrubs, and, you know, on the shelves, for access as required, and, and the burn. Okay, I'm satisfied with them, but what do we got, other calls? Wait.
I'm calling you, what's your name?
Okay, Dave?
Oh, come on.
Leonard?
Sure, sure.
Your body?
Whatever Sean says.
I just like...
He's gonna see it.
That's all, before anybody votes on it, okay, 'cause it's my...
I mean, they have a difference, Sue wants to, she'll either vote no, or is asking the board to...
Just to wait two seconds.
...post on it, and so, Sean can see.
All right, well, again, this doesn't keep you from getting out there and cutting, so let's put this on the thirty-one.
But if we have to start changing designs and orientations, and, you know, companies, because they're, it's never proved, gotta go back to the, it's kind of hard.
When you did jump to fifty-five?
Fifty, fifty-four. Oh, wait, that was, that was fifty-two, that was fifty-four, wetlands, and any required buffers, would it be marked prior to final treatment?
I, I have words, and any buffers required, required buffers in quotes here, because typically, we just do the wetlands. We don't do wetland anymore. Sorry, we just wanted to clarify a case.
Yeah, you can mark the wetlands, right?
It's the weather, I want to know what, you want to know, if you want to start, I don't need to see that.
They're not within... They're not within, are you within a hundred feet of anything?
Well, the only state that they're actually state is just over here.
Yeah, the only one...
What we've had, what we've done is, we've, but we've worked with the state, but what we've, what we've done is, we've worked with the state, and we're, we're honoring, I think, we make this one, and, and this complex, uh, is also, uh, have some setbacks. We, we don't have a hundred setbacks, but we're on, we're gonna consider it, uh, a contribution. But the, the condition is specific to individual lots, right? Well, like, an area like this, where you, where wetland would come up, we would put, that would get marked, I mean, we're not gonna go back here and mark.
No, and along, and along the backs of the...
Yeah, so anywhere, where you may have, it's like, basically, it's just this area right here, and right here, and right here, that would get marked. We're talking adjacent to construction areas? Yeah, yeah, or, 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 playing the rest, there's a couple of, just into the lots, for those to get marked.
Okay, well, again, in those areas, lay on that buffer.
Right.
So, there would be, the wetlands would be adequate, meaning...
Well, normally, that's what the board does.
And you've got an area of disturbance marked out anyway, or the area to be disturbed on the lot. Okay. I said, and then required buffer.
Ruin that, great.
Yeah.
Was that acceptable?
Yeah. All right, condition fifty-five, uh, these boards' concurrence of pulver pipes are being proposed with the wetland and cross, we admit the...
Arch.
At the arch.
The arch.
So, we, we, we're getting rid of that one, because we don't confer, we're gonna do the arch. Okay, so now, we're back to Sean, do we have a north-north direction line here?
You want me to look at it, I, I, like, no more time, I'm sorry.
One, one thing, I, why, three pages? Okay, all right, well, that one's gonna have to wait, he's gonna have to look at that, um, short of Sean, can I?
We'll go back to fifty-five.
Yeah.
I have to write that to the resolution.
Yeah, no, I was, I was just gonna say, short of Sean feeling that this is significant, a significant advantage after his review, um, I think what we were hearing was, it was pretty much a concurrence going forward, and say as we are, and your, our consulting review has been adequate, unless Sean decides... I closed. Yeah, you're in a kitchen, giving everybody damn.
I'm in the yard.
Yeah, I mean, rain barrel's a good idea, I'm just not letting you take credit for the recharge mechanism, because they're not.
They prevent...
They're the opposite of a recharge, what they're for is, so you can retain that water, and it's not away, and you can use it during dry times, but during dry times, there's no recharge, it goes into the plants and the vessels.
But it's versus pumping your well for your plant, so although it's not a recharge, it also doesn't run into the stormwater.
Water conservation, I said it's not recharge. He's, he's doing recharge.
I misspoke, conservation.
Oh, yeah, I know, I'll, I'll give you that one, it is water conservation.
But I, I think if we do it, I think, uh, sometimes you do it a lot, are these gonna be, were you gonna pass these, or no, you're just gonna provide them?
Like, really good, public champion.
And these are the ones with the pipe goes in, it has a lid on it, and the whole bit, right, so, no one, no one tack, ground, do the dumb thing, or...
So, we have two...
What happens if we let it go back to the tolls off? Is there a little control on it?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's all left, it's on run. Yeah, then, then it floods out, and just, it just floods out, and it's recharging, yeah, there's none of it.
Condition thirteen and fifty-two. Two that are on.
Thirteen and fifty-two, and, no, there's another one, and, uh, thirty-eight.
Say that again?
No, 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 not thirty-eight, uh...
Well...
Yeah, six?
Well, I mean, that's been postponed, but it's been dealt with. There are two that I'm saying that we have started to address, and then said, let's go back, those are the two that we still haven't addressed.
All right, yeah, all right, okay?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
What is it, thirteen?
Thirteen and fifty-two.
Thirteen is, you have to, requires the town engineer and the board to be split, uh, I don't think that that, that fifty, that fifty-two, there's bearing on that.
As I said earlier, we, we advise the pond, we have to change the whole category, so the shape of the pond does impact, the line share within here, a rock one, based on the shape of the pond, how water is radically...
Well, we're, it's, then we just do, how long do we, we, we need to, we need to...
That's what we said, we need more time, we've gotta go through it, so we can't address it.
So, put it in on the same schedule as...
No, no, we need, we're, we're getting, we're, they're gonna issue a permit, that's what, I mean, this is...
He's telling me he can't address it tonight, that's what he said, said, if you don't address it tonight, you need more time.
In regard to the comment, like, about the orientation of the pond, uh, north-northwest, that it would help mitigating the temperature in the pond?
I don't, I don't know that it was north, I don't...
This is condition, it's January twenty-fourth, you were in the workshop, and we're in at the point of what...
Either way, Sean, I, if you could look at this, and see if there's any possible way where it would...
I'd like to talk a little bit after, although, also, two of the ponds, let me just say that what I just drew here, from discharge point to, to the out of fill, this is one thousand three hundred and fifty, it's been traveled over, over, it's gonna be discharged from the pond, to the, to the wetland, but it's very, very flat. Why do we preserve wet, we preserve wetlands because we naturally facilitate groundwater absorption, they have a natural ability to, uh, recycle nutrients, both man-made and natural, um, they have, they also slow down velocities of water, so we reduce the pressure of erosion, uh, so, that's why we discharge them in the directions that we discharge them, you know, the, two of these ponds also are influenced by groundwater, uh, and what that means is, is that these are, these are wet ponds, two of them have a deep field of water in, in the main basin, and three field of water in the spore bag, uh, and one of them has sixty field of water and three field of water. Those, that was in the, in the short bit earlier, what happens when the water condenses these bases, and again, the two that are influenced by groundwater, groundwater's sixty-five degrees, so it's naturally gonna, that those ponds are gonna be cooled, you know, the warm water, the, the water from, from the site, that goes into the pond, it's held over twenty-four hour periods, so it'll let out, let out, so it'll be, have the ability to cool, have the ability to work mixed with groundwater, and then when it gets discharged, it's going over, so it's just gonna be a function of whatever the ambient temperature is in the ground, versus sixty degrees, you know, whatever, sixty-five in the summertime, and the air temperature, so regardless of orientation, I mean, that's basically, this is where you're cooling, mixing the groundwater, and the whole rain flow, uh, is where you're gonna really reduce the potential for thermal load.
Well, with all due respect, Steve, I, I just, I think I started putting a paper together about thermal loading, and, and this, a guy, Gally, from nineteen ninety, wrote that, um, based on the studies they've done, and it's in Maryland, um, that, uh, wet ponds increased stream temperatures, they found out, about nine degrees, so, it's a complete opposite of what you're saying, you had, the ponds are...
I haven't been able to, I'm unfamiliar with the work, so I can't...
The point here is that we're not discharging to a stream, we're discharging to a wetland, where the water flows overground for, for, you know, point of length.
All I'm asking is just for Sean to look at it.
Okay, well, how long do we need to look at it, after the...
I can get comment, uh, of more, but, yeah, based on the need. Unless the board wants the, the volume additional.
Well, I think one, one of the, I'm trying to, one of, one of these issues that we had in the meeting schedule, is pushing that, and you know, that the need to be sparing, this really doesn't need to be, so, 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 if you can get out your comments soon, certain board if you want to accept your comments tonight, so if you can get out your comments soon, and it's been entered and marked, then the board will have the benefit of those, or they have prior to their next meeting, they can actually do that, like, or even have a determination on that condition, and also, and that will be two weeks, probably.
Okay, and that would be, that would be well before the end of the month, so, I mean, is the...
Oh, that's, that really depends on what the outcome of research is, because if we're redesigning ponds and changing...
Yeah, but if that goes bad, then it's gonna be a commission to let in, you're gonna have to reach for that.
Right, so, same.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but if Sean would look at it tonight, and make that a change, it also would be a contact, so...
So the only delay is two weeks. Is two weeks absolutely, or two weeks added on, two weeks?
Sure that, I think the planning board will have a problem with Sean sending you the comments at the same time he sent them to the planning board, so you will have an idea prior to the planning board meeting, as to where it's going.
Okay? Steve, uh, fifty-one and fifty-three, just for lots again?
Yeah, yeah, well, that's what we figured out, the lot.
Appreciate the board's effort, can I get to the next one?
All right, thank you.
Lot of trouble. Good night.
Good night. Yeah, next thing on the agenda is, uh, mushrooms, and...
I had it on the record.
Okay, it's on the record. It was approached by, uh, Tapper, attorney. I did work a couple years ago for an individual, uh, special inspection on a facility, apparently, this gentleman's taking builders to court, called construction based online to court. I've been asked to go with him, next, but witness and testimony, he had this applicant, uh, who happened to be using Tapper, and to the attorney, just wanna get it out there, 'cause Tapper's involved, and so will always attract Rick, and maybe not too many conflicts, but it's one of the rules to, uh, have some...
Well, that's, that's in the contract, then. Clearly not a conflict, it's not that he's, uh, working for Tapper, and coincidentally, Tapper always retiring on a project that Lee is working on, that has no relation to any application to the court. And it's clearly not a conflict, but the Epic rules generally say that, uh, when you have anything that might even be considered to be one, that it's considered not to be, it's best for disclosure purposes to be that on the record.
Okay, so that's, all right, I'll talk to you about, hold on a second. I mean, you know, there are people, there are professionals that come through here all the time, that I am on teams with, in other counties, on other projects, I don't work for them, I happen to be on the same team of a project director. And I know this, when I've checked, that's never been a conflict.
Not a conflict.
So do I need to note every time that happens? But that is...
There's no requirement that you note, but, uh, what I suggested for Lee is exercise a redundant caution, that we, if you also wanna have an exercise of a redundant caution, you can do it, but it is not legally required.
Okay, well, I'm working on a project in Dover Plain, uh, in opposition to a shopping company, Dover Plain, for a team, that today, uh, Peter Vackenfow and, uh, and Steve Estavito's group were brought into the team to deal with landscape architecture, comments, and, uh, stormwater.
That would, that would not be, but none of this, the applicant's not presently before this, um, planning board on any application.
And when that does happen, I have, but, but, uh, that is not the case. But for the first time, in like forever, people would come before this girl, and are coming to this thing, were brought onto the team that I was already put in. All right, I found that out today, I'm gonna have to show that up now. Yeah, it's like, what are you doing? Okay, have a motion to vote in?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All those favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, we're out of here.
Oh, no, now you have... It was on the one o'clock in the morning.
When I saw the comments, I knew, this could be the never-ending story. And it goes down in parlance.